Public hearing for the Hammond City Council meeting on October 1st, 2013. Order please. Okay, first item on the public hearing. An ordinance for final approval request for Gordon District subdivision lots 1 through 38 and G1. Acceptance of dedication of Octavia Street and Farrett Street. 60-foot right-of-way of all public utilities, 10-foot utility servitude along said right-of-way, and 15-foot sewer servitude in accordance with revised plat by William J. Bowden Jr., 2013, as 8-2 recommended approval by the planning commission.
This was the case I told you about last council meeting where the subdivision was approved by resolution, never came back as an ordinance and got only adopted by the city. The developer would like to dedicate it to the city and be done.
Any questions on the council? Any public question or comments about item number one? Number two, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 12-5319 to extend the date of the required completion of construction of the permanent cul-de-sac at the end of Dr. John Lambert Drive in Providence Ridge subdivision Phase 2, 2008-8-2 recommended approval to extend for one year by the planning commission.
It's extending the surety that they'll complete it eventually unless things pick up a little bit, but as of right now, things are pretty stagnant, so they would like to extend the surety for one more year.
Any questions on this item from the council?
This is the second extension, right?
Correct.
Public questions or comments? Number three, an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Lloyd A. Carlton to allow placement of a mobile home meeting all code requirements on 213 Green Street, Zone R4, ECU 2013-8-1 recommended denial by the zoning commission.
Mr. Carlton wanted to put a mobile home on his property. It was landlocked, there was a bit of an access issue. That was one of the concerns. The other concern was it wasn't in a proposed mobile home park area, so they recommended denial.
Denial based on?
It was the two things I just cited. One was part of the board felt like it was not in a proposed mobile home park area. The other portion, some other concerns were that it had some access issues that they felt he needed to get worked out prior to approval.
Counsel?
Just to make sure, Mr. President, just for, I know it's a technicality, but there's two reasons. The initial reason is because it's not approved in the mobile home area first, right?
Correct. That's very correct.
That's the primary reason.
Yes, sir.
So I want to make sure that's...
I'm just stating the opinions that came out in the minutes of the meeting. But I do know Councilman Warren had mentioned tabling this last time, and I have not heard from him, but I know that he did make mention at our last meeting about that, so...
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item?
Was the table lined?
No, it wasn't. It was just introduced for public hearing.
Okay, that's right. Can I have more if it's okay, Mr. President? The reason why the prime load was because of the access issue was the main reason why we were looking at that.
And I will say the access issue, it was annexed that way. It was annexed with an access issue, so that was created by the annexation. It feels like that when it came in.
Number four, an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Jenny E. Raina, occupant applicant, and Jimmy Nguyen, owner, to allow consumption of alcohol in Giovanni Food Mart LLC in a B2 and C2 district located at 605 Conch Street, ECU 2013-8-2 recommended denial by the zoning commission.
In B2, you can sell packaged liquor, can't serve it in an open container, so the planning commission felt like it was in much too heavily of a residential area to allow that, so it wasn't in an area that would be beneficial.
Okay. Any questions from the council?
Just for, the other zone is also that the C2, is it B2?
And C2.
And C2 also is not allowed.
C2 does allow.
C2 does allow.
C2 does allow.
But the building itself is in B2.
A small portion of it actually falls into the C2, but it wouldn't be enough to really...
Gotcha. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Come on up, please, ma'am. We'll need your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name is Jenny Raina. I live at 1401 West Church Street, Park and Beacon. I was, my understanding about, you know, the alcohol and all that, there was not to be served around college, I mean, church and all that, and I don't have any church around it. And if it gets served in the restaurant, I'm moving to store next door, so I won't have customers from the store coming to the restaurant. So, and this is asked by the customers for me, you know, to do this. They want to eat and drink a beer or whatever, or, you know, I also have a full menu, you know, in the restaurant house.
Do you understand also part of the problem, not just that it's not located by church or school, but not zoned correctly? And that zoning is a protect residential neighborhood, that's what it's doing. So that's, that's an issue, not just a church or school issue.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Louise Bostick. I live at 112 Almond Drive, and I'm a resident of the neighborhood. I hadn't intended to speak because this was discussed very thoroughly, and I was at the zoning board meeting at the time, but this is almost completely surrounded, I guess it is completely surrounded by residential, a lot of apartments, a lot of college residents, and most of the neighbors in the area that I visited with would prefer to not have liquor served by the drink in this particular location. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we can't hear. Is that microphone on? I can't hear.
Well, number one's there, too. Maybe she needs to get closer.
Ms. Raina, do you have anything else you want to add?
I got a couple letters. I had some more, and I didn't, I didn't have a chance to pick it up. Some letters from the neighbors, and they didn't have a problem with it.
Would you, would you hand them to the council per, per, please? This says alcohol. I have a quick question. It doesn't specify what type of, is it, is it high content or low content, or is it all content? All content. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay. We'll be dealing with it later on in the meeting, Ms. Raina.
I would, I would like to add that there are some lot line issues. Buildings are built over lines and stuff like that, so that if it is so approved, I would ask this condition on cleaning up some stuff, because setbacks and things like that are impossible to meet as it is.
Okay.
Shouldn't we clean up the lines regardless, though?
I think so, but if you're going to approve it, it gives much more leverage to get it done, you know, expedite the process.
Can we have alcohol in the conference?
Not that I'm aware of. No, sir. It's been sold packaged, but never open container.
Sir, did you come in and speak about the Green Street?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. We're going to jump back to that, then we'll give you an opportunity to speak. Come on up, sir, and give us your name and address for the record, and this is to address a request by Lloyd Carlton to allow placement of a mobile home in, in Zoned R4.
My name's Lloyd.
What's your name, sir?
Lloyd Carlton. My address is 700 M. Seymour Road, Hammond, Louisiana.
What would you like to tell us about the situation, sir?
Okay. Right now, I had to do, still trying to do some research on it, but I went and got another map. I don't know if it's a later map, because I was trying to find out who that piece of property is for, and they don't have it up to date. And they went back, it's supposed to be from Mr. Truman Johnson, or Money Johnson, but this map shows a man named Mr. Charles Causey. And I was trying to find, doing some research, trying to find him. I don't know if he's deceased or still living. I mean, I went to the neighborhood and asked a few people that didn't really know where he was. So that's what they were trying to, I was trying to find out who owned that spot of land, but I, they also had some other neighbors, you know, in the, in the, that lived on that street, and they still, they still have access to it. Because what y'all were telling me that I needed access to their property, right?
Gotcha. They did bring up the fact to you, sir, that in the, in the plan that, that a lot of people had worked on in the city for a master plan, that this particular area did not call for mobile homes. Did they mention that to you at the zoning meeting?
Well, yes, sir, they mentioned it, but they're up. They said they're up.
I just don't want you to be under the impression that the only reason that was denied by the zoning commission was because of it being landlocked.
Right.
Okay.
But there are a couple of, I'm just saying, a couple of mobile homes in that area.
Okay. All right. Well, we're going to be getting to it later in the meeting, so we'll deal with it at that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay. Number five, I believe we're on. Number five, an ordinance to approve the rezoning requested by Lloyd Angeron Jr. and Laura San Filippo Ettl to rezone the most easterly portion of lots 6, 7, and 8, Lot 3 of the Oak Ridge addition, approximately 300 plus feet plus or minus from R4 to C3, located at 923, 925, and 927 South Morrison Boulevard, RZ 2013-8-1. Failure of a majority vote by the zoning commission.
Yeah, I could make this argument now, but I would feel very uncomfortable if you all voted for the rezoning, and my next-door neighbors would be unhappy. I think we've spoken, and we'd like to get together next week, and I think we can possibly resolve what they want, what they would like done, where everyone would be happy.
Will you table the U. Marshall's?
Lloyd Angeron Jr.
Okay.
So I'd like to table this for further discussion. We, we spoke, and I think we could possibly do something to make them happy, that they would want, where they would feel comfortable.
Okay, so you would like for us...
But I wouldn't want you, all of you, to say, "Okay, you can rezon it," and I wouldn't want them to be unhappy neighbors next door. I think, I think we can resolve this.
Gotcha. Okay, so you would like for us to hold off on this item?
Yes, yes.
Ms. Angeron, give us your address for the record.
605 West Thomas.
Gotcha. Okay, we'll, we'll make that correction down later on in the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to add on this item?
Josh, would it pay to reach a majority? Is it like two, two votes?
It was a split vote, so it was, comes with no recommendation. It has to have three votes.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Cassandra Davis, 701 Mississippi Street, and in reference to what the gentleman said, basically, we requested, or we thought that we could table it then, and at that time, they didn't choose to table it, so the vote wasn't approved. So I just wanted to mention that we were interested in tabling at the time. Mr. Lloyd did not use tabling as an option. So with my aunts, and my aunt here, and my mother's not here, so Mr. Lloyd and she spoke, and we are going to talk with him, and I'm going to say the opposite of what Mr. Lloyd said. We're voting against it, and truly, we don't want him to be unhappy either, but we're voting against it, but we're going to listen to what he has to say, because it is a residential neighborhood, and I want my aunt to be happy, and I want my mother to be happy, as well as my son, who's living on that property in a few years as well, you know, as an adult. So we're going to talk, and we want to know when you guys want us to come back after we talk, but...
Well, this, if we table it tonight, this will come up at the next meeting, which would be 14 days from today.
14 days from today.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If, if they're going to work it out, why would we not withdraw this altogether? And why are we, I'm just asking a question, maybe I'm wrong in asking, but if they are asking us to, to take it off the agenda, why do we just, why do we just not take it off the agenda?
I don't think they were, I didn't take it as they were asking us to take it off the agenda. They want to talk things out, and whether they're happy or not, he still may come ask for this, is the way I took that. And then he'll ask for a vote.
Let me ask it this way. If it's, this is kind of how I understand it. If it's, if it's still going back through the zoning commission and that group versus to us?
It's not.
So they're going to work it out, and does the zoning, so then does the zoning commission get a chance to vote again before?
Yes, sir.
Or are they now working it out through us? Because I did have a question about that, because one of the reasons, and I had, I had a chance to attend the meeting, the primary reason why it was being, why there was no vote or, or a two versus two, was because there was an issue with another gentleman who mentioned that a part of the property that he owned crossed Lovett Street. Am I saying that correctly?
That was his claim.
And that was his claim, and that was a primary reason for the decision to not, to vote against it. So one of the things I want to make sure that we got worked out was, was that claim valid?
No, that wasn't valid. I don't feel like that, I don't feel like that was one of the concerns, really. I think it was more that this family here was a major concern. The two that voted no, they were a major concern.
I thought that was a reason why one of the gentlemen didn't want to vote against it, because he was unsure about that request. We asked you to check on it first.
We, we have property records, and we have property descriptions before we even bring it there for a rezoning, and we clarified ownership before he got on our agenda, so we were, we were able to tell him immediately that it was his property.
But I thought Mr. Weber said that he was going to provide documentation, or he was going to come back.
He said that, but, I mean, everything that we have in the property description from its original subdivision was not his, it was somebody else's.
Okay. Well, I guess y'all will meet and be back at the next meeting?
In two weeks, 14 days, and then you all would vote?
Ma'am.
Then you all would vote for this?
Yes, ma'am.
To determine yes or no?
Unless it's asked to be tabled again?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Josh. We'll move right into our regular schedule meeting for October 1st, 2013. Roll call, please.
Johnny Flynn?
Here.
Jason Hood?
Here.
Bobby Martin?
Here.
Lamar Marshall?
Here.
Mike Williams?
Here.
Most gracious heaven and father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity for us to be here as free Americans. Father, we pray a special blessing on those of our troops that are overseas. We pray that you will have your protective arm stretched out, protecting each and every one of them, and that you will bring them home safely. Father, we pray you blessing on this meeting. We pray that the decisions that are made tonight will be pleasing in our sight, and it's in thy name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Weber.
.............................................
Okay. Do we have any council reports? Mr. Mayor, you have a report for us?
Yes, sir. A very exciting report. We did receive our sales tax collection analysis. This was, we didn't get the official report. This is the unofficial report, but the collections were $1,426,250, which is up 10.4% from the previous year. It is still slightly under budget, but it's still very, very, very good. The other report I want to talk about is the Household Recycling Day, which is going to be held Saturday, October 26th. I know that a lot of our citizens are interested in this recycling day, and wanted to be sure that the council and the public is aware of that day. Another question that has come up, Mr. President, to the council, is concerning the government shutdown. And we had a meeting today, a grant planning and grants meeting, and we talked about this particular situation, and we do not see that the government shutdown is going to affect us directly. Lacy is here. We had the meeting concerning all of the grants that are currently, that were currently going through, including the $5 million INI provision. Lacy has indicated that she has talked to some of the people at DEQ. Lacy, you want to give a report on that, if you could, please, just so everyone will know where we are on that particular project?
Just to clarify, it is a state revolving loan, but it does receive its authority through the federal government, so we just called to make sure, we did this with all of our grants over the last few days, to call all of our program officers and to email, just to make sure that there was nothing pending, and that there wasn't going to be any exchange between the federal and the state agencies that would prohibit or delay any of our project activities. So all of our funds are fine. We will continue our, our reporting just as we normally do. Our annual reports are all due during this month, and we will continue all those activities as we normally go along.
And before you sit down, we also have received approval from the Facilities Planning Department of the State of Louisiana that would allow us to move forward with the, with the police station. And do you remember those dates right off the top of your head? I don't have those, I didn't write them down.
The bid advertisement will start October 8th, this coming Tuesday, and we will open bids on November 5th, about a month after that.
So all of our projects, Mr. President, to the council, to the public, are moving forward. We'll be talking about the airport in a lot of detail in just a little while.
May I ask you a question about one of the projects? I know the Pine Hill subdivision project was looking for state funding. Can you get an update on that?
Yes. Matter of fact, I talked to Senator Bodie White today. It is currently a priority two. There are two priority two items that we had. One was the pre-planning for the wastewater, pre-wastew, pre-treatment of the wastewater. That was $175,000. The other item was the Pine Hill subdivision, $300,000. They are moving forward with bond sales starting next month, and hopefully, we can get it included in one of those bond sales through the state.
We have submitted all the paperwork for that to proceed, and this is the normal timeframe that that comes down.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any new businesses that would like to be recognized? Okay. Approval of minutes.
Johnny Flynn?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay, resolutions. New business, number one, a resolution authorizing downtown development district to serve alcohol in a waiver of the open container law for storing November nights on Friday, November 15, 2013, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM within the boundaries of downtown development district. Most of the activity will be concentrated on East and West Robert Street, East and West Thomas Street, and West Charles Street from Northwest Railroad Avenue to Cape Street, North Cypress Street, and the Casa de Fresa, and the Kidder Park Mall. Good afternoon.
Good evening.
How are you?
Any questions for me about the street closures and things like that?
Any public questions or comments on this?
Second.
Johnny Flynn?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Number two, a resolution to approve the Hammond Regional Airport capital improvement master plan application for state financial assistance through the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development Division of Aviation, and to authorize the mayor to sign all documents related to this matter.
Good evening.
Good afternoon.
This is the capital improvement plan that we prepare through our engineers every year and submit every year this time for planning through the State Department of Transportation to outline the next five years' worth of projects that we're requesting for help with from the state and the FAA. If you look in 14, 2014, it's split up with some federal money and then also some state-only money. So it's two separate projects that we'll be requesting that year, and then phases throughout the next two years, all using state and federal money. There's no city money that's being requested on this document. I want to point that out, most of all, with a total of about $9.1 million or so estimated costs of the projects that we're requesting.
Okay. Any questions from Mr. Bob? Public questions, come?
Johnny Flynn?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for improvements at Hammond North Shore Regional Airport, state project number H010746. Mr. Bob?
Numbers three and four are both related to the construction of the tower. We are in need of a emergency backup generator for the tower's operation, and also, we are requesting a relocation of the airport rotating beacon, which is the light that you see coming from the airfield. Relocating it from its current position to the top of the cab of the tower. The state has agreed that they will cover those costs, no costs to the city, under grant through the NAVAids section of DOTD aviation. So we requested, and they've approved, and asking us to sign this documentation for, I think it's $35,000 for one, and I'm not sure about the numbers, to be honest with you. I think the first one's for the generator.
Questions from Mr. Bob?
Sir, can you give me the price on the grant total for each one of those?
$35,000 for the emergency backup generator, and the beacon, I think, was estimated $15,000. That's for the, we're buying a refurbished beacon and then dismantling ours, the tower, deconstructing that tower, and sending it off. They'll, what they'll do is instead of just moving the beacon, they'll actually take the old beacon, give us a brand-new, and the same that's been cleaned up and updated, and give it to us in exchange for ours.
It's all done through state grants?
All done through state grants, no costs to the city. And they do this, emergency backup generators, they do it at every airport in Louisiana. That's the generator we have out there backing up our taxiway light system, was also state, fully state-funded, so that's why he's agreed to fund this one as well.
Want to do it?
Johnny Flynn?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number four, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development for improvements at the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport, state project number H01075.
This is just a second. Correct. Yes, sir.
Johnny Flynn?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you very much.
Number five, a resolution authorizing Hammond Fraternal Order of Police to sell alcohol, waive the open container law within the boundaries of Hanson Avenue to East Thomas Street, and within the site, the Alvis, the Northern House. and within the site, the Alvis, the Northern House, and the St. James Parking Malls for the Chili Cook-Off event on Saturday, November 2nd, 2013, from 8:00 AM until 6:00 PM. You are not Mr. Burdron.
No, I'm sorry. I'm here for Mr. Burdron. I'm Chad Hill. I just came to.
Anything different from normal?
No, sir. It's going to be the same as the last couple of years.
Any questions?
Nope.
Public questions or comments on this side?
Second.
Johnny Plun.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all y'all needed with me tonight. Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Number six, a resolution to approve change order number one, final, on North Oak Street Improvements, project number 420-11309, with $55,136.97. Correct.
You should have hyperlink change order number one, final. It details all the items that represent in-place quantities as constructed. Usually, we don't have change orders this large coming back, so I'd like the detail exactly. Three main things of why this occurred. The first line is a decrease of roughly $25,000. You see, that's for asphalt. And what we did was, we were able to accomplish the slope correction that I was trying to achieve through milling instead of adding the asphalt. And that was kind of a suggestion by Berrier, who gets paid by the ton for asphalt. So it was a good idea. It resulted in a good ride of the road. If you, I'm sure you've written it. So we accepted that recommendation, and that was the bulk of this. The other reason, one of the other reasons for the large amount is that when we did that slope correction through milling, we had to, we reduced the amount of manholes that we had to adjust. So that's another large item that was involved in it. And then the third large item is patching. If you rode the road prior to us touching it, you know, it was really bad. And we overestimated the amount of patching that we would have to do. But once we milled it, the base was actually in pretty good shape. We didn't get any rains on it. Well, we had one big rain, but not too much rain on it. So the base remained in good shape, so we reduced that quantity. And that's the lion's share of change order number one. It's in the amount of $55,136.97. It's a decrease in the construction amount. The contract amount would then be $342,533.03 would be the final contract amount. And we recommend approval of change order number one.
Questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have a question. Is this in this year's budget, 2013, 2014?
No. It was, yes, I'm sorry. It is in this year's budget.
Capital project budget.
Yes.
So when we have a, when we have a decrease or, I guess, a surplus, whatever you want to call it, additional funds to allocate for capital projects, do we then get recommendations on how we can utilize that savings and add additional projects on to the?
This money stays in the, this money stays in the 420 funds. It can be moved inside of 420 via.
And 420 is specific?
420 is capital improvements. That's all our capital improvements. It can be moved via budget change forms that are approved by the council and the mayor. And it can be moved outside of 420 funds via ordinance, by ordinance, if it's deemed appropriate.
So the question is, if we were able through processes of not overestimating that we have additional $55,000 with a lot of capital projects that we have, I would assume that we would look at that and figure out, what can we add to that we, because you know, when we went through the budget hearings, we spent a lot of time talking about priorities and what we were at to take off because we have enough funding allocated. I sure wish we can, you know, go back and look at those projects that we unfunded or did not fund or did not get a priority, that those projects can be reconsidered again. Because they're definitely, I could tell you, a few projects that we had to take off the plan because of lack of funding. So I don't know if that's something that we can, we'd have to ask to be done, Mr. President, or to sit back. Or can we talk about that as a council? What would you recommend?
Well, if it was me, and I had a project, then I would get with the administration, and I would speak to the administration about that. That's generally the way I have done it in the past. I don't believe ever that I can remember in the six and a half years we've ever had a change order with a $55,000.
Usually, we go the other way, but.
He's got a lot more of these to do than to make up.
Come on, man.
Anywhere close. But it's, this is very, very rare. So, but I don't know that I've ever done that, but I have met with the administration and asked for projects to be funded throughout the year. Doesn't mean we have to wait to budget time, but that would be something that had to be worked out with the administration.
Going back over what I said, this is actually last year's, this is 1213 funds, not 1314. Not, 1314 is what we're in now. This was last year, so.
Once they're appropriated, they stay in fund.
And they're funded.
Yeah.
So that the money is put in the fund.
Okay. Any public questions or comments on this side? Any other council question?
Second.
Johnny Plun.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number seven, a resolution of acceptance of work as substantially complete on North Oak Street Improvements, project number 420-11309, commencing 45-day lean period, withholding 10% retainage.
You also have this hyperlink. It's our standard form, notice of, notice by owner of acceptance of work. The job is complete, has been inspected, and we recommend approval.
Pleasure of the council.
Second.
Johnny Plun.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
I'm going to ask the council just to remove item number eight. Andre, I found out that I did not get it worded correctly. I'll come back, that's why I tabled it. I need to get it to DOTD and come back with this resolution for signage for the new sports park. So if somebody could remove this item from the agenda.
Motion to remove. Second.
Johnny Plun.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion carried to remove this item from the agenda.
Do we have an item to add?
Mr. President, we have a request. Chuck, you want to come on up? We have a request from Spangler Engineering to consider an amendment on a project that's going on at the airport. I think that it would be appropriate, the school drain, if we ask that the agenda be amended at this time. Is that correct?
And what's the subject matter? Will you say the subject?
The agenda would be to, a resolution approving change order number one on Hammond North Shore Regional Airport Drainage Improvement Phase One. I abbreviate, HNRA, Drainage Improvement Phase One.
Motion to amend the agenda.
Johnny Plun.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion to amend the agenda to add item number eight.
Should have hyperlink the change order. I sent it over to the witness this afternoon. The reason, one reason we're. That's several sheets. There's budget, and then there's the change order. The reason we didn't want to wait two weeks is we have a window of weather that will close in about 30 days. And we didn't want to wait two more weeks to initiate this work. We've encountered an underground river or stream, I guess you would call it, under the drainage work being done at the airport. We've evaluated what it'd take to eliminate the water from our, where we're laying new drainage, because there's a water table at about four feet deep, and we're laying pipe down to eight feet deep. So we have pretty much this much water. And it's called a well-pointing system. It's a standard system that's well-known in the construction industry. We've used it, in my 25 years here, we've used it three times maybe. Very rare, but it does occur. Most of the time, it's at the airport. Apparently, the Old Tansford River must have gone through there or something because there are beds, long sand beds saturated with water. We're trying to get this approved now because the next 60 days will be the dry part of the year, and then water table will have a natural reduction. And if we wait into December to do this work, we may never get it pumped down until the spring. So this change order is for $26,541.20. We have offset some of the extras with removal of some of the bedding requirements. Bedding is that brand-new material that's placed under the pipe when it's laid. And we'll have a great sand bed. So we've cut out about $30,000 worth of limestone because we're going to have a nice white, sugar-white sand bedding, which is ideal if it's already in there in the ground. And we've done a few other relatively minor items to offset the total cost. The budget, you'll notice, does show that we have $44,000 contingencies. And with approval of the change order, if you look at the budget, it says contingencies, including change order number one. Actually, I don't have that quickly. Yes, I do. I think that'll leave us around $17,000. So we're not wiping out our contingencies. We're using a lot of it. This is a significant, if I would say, 60% of this contract is based on laying this two-barrel, 72-inch concrete pipe across the end of runway 1331 to allow that water to cross the runway without flooding the runway. The whole basis on getting this grant. It is all 100% state funds. I have discussed this with the aviation specialist, Mr. Doue, who is pretty much Jason and my boss on this project. He's running the grant from the state. He's in agreement with what we're doing. He understands what we're doing and agrees that as long as we got the contingencies, we're not asking for more grant money. It's acceptable in their eyes. However, this is a construction contract between the city of Hammond and Lawson-Bonnet. The state's simply providing the funds. So we still have to execute a change order if it's your pleasure. And I'll entertain any questions that you have.
Yeah, I just, I didn't understand, there's two things. I didn't understand the construction contingency. I see the $17,000 on there. Were you saying that it was a higher?
Originally, it was $44,000. If you look at the top date on the budget, that's today's budget, based on approval of the change order. So if you add $26,000 to that number, that was our originally. Grant set up the fund, and they set up a fund with $900, whatever, $85,000 construction and 44 contingencies. Well, now, we're at $1,011,000, and we have $20,017 in contingencies.
So you're using some of that contingency, so we're not adding, we're not having to use funds from the city for that.
That's accurate. We're using zero funds from the city. We're using only state-allocated contingency funds, which is precisely why they're there.
Right.
When you do a job like this, and you're digging the ground, who knows what's going to encounter? And hopefully, we won't encounter any other problems, but we'll have $17,000 left to deal with.
Any other questions? Public questions or comments on this side? Pleasure of the council.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Plun.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Okay. Final adoption of ordinance. Number one, final adoption of an ordinance for final approval request for Garden District subdivision lots 1 through 38, NG1, acceptance of dedication of Octavia Street and Farrex Street, 60-foot right-ofways of all public utilities, 10-foot utility servitude along said right-ofways, and 15-foot sewer servitude in accordance with revised plat by William J. Bowden, Jr., SDF 2013-8-2, recommended approval by Planning Commission.
Second.
Johnny Plun.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, final adoption of an ordinance to amend ordinance number 12-5319 to extend the date of the required completion of construction of the permanent cul-de-sac at the end of Dr. John Lamer Drive in Providence Ridge subdivision Phase Two. SDF 2008-8-2, recommended approved to extend for one year by the Planning Commission.
Motion to approve.
Johnny Plun.
Aye.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number three, final adoption of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Lloyd A. Carlton to allow a placement of a mobile home, meeting all code requirements, on 213 Green Street, Zone R4, ECU 2013-8-1, recommended denial by the zoning commission.
Motion to deny.
Mr. President, I would like to check to make sure that Mr. Carlton has met all of the requirements, although I see that it doesn't seem to have. Was he in the process of trying to fulfill those?
He came and spoke, and he tried to get in touch with someone about something, about a piece of property next door. Didn't sound like there was a lot of closure on that. I think the council discussed that the major reason that it was recommended denial was because that it was not in the master plan for mobile home in this particular sum. So I think he did work on it, but it wasn't completely. So we have a motion. Now, a second on the table.
Johnny Plun.
Right. Scott, question comment. Just call for a question comment. Yeah, ready. Mr. Plun.
Jason Hood.
Aye.
Bobby Martin.
Aye.
Lamar Marshall.
Aye.
Mike Williams.
Aye.
Motion to deny, carried to deny.
Okay. Number four, final adoption of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Jenny Ibrahim, occupant applicant, and Jimmy Nguyen, owner, to allow consumption of alcohol in Giovanni's Food Mart LLC in B2 and C2 District located at 605 Contra Street. ECU 2013-8-2, recommended denial by the zoning commission. the zoning commission.
Motion to deny. Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion carried to deny.
Okay. We tabled item number five.
I think you need an official-
We need to go ahead and, okay. Yeah, we have to table it. Number five, final adoption of an ordinance to approve the rezoning request by Lloyd Angeron, Jr., and Laura E. Sanfilippo Atto to rezone the most eastly portion of lots six, seven, and eight, block three of the Oak Ridge Edition approximately three hundred feet plus or minus from R four to C three located at nine twenty-three, nine twenty-five, and nine twenty-seven South Ocean Boulevard, failure of a majority vote by zoning commission.
Question?
Yes, sir.
So, just as just for my clarification, I'm asking a question. So if the two parties get back together and they come up with some type of an agreement, are we still using the zoning or the zoning board to be cut, to be our first line of approval? So if, if they change and they come up with a different strategy that the zoning board doesn't necessarily approve of, are we then not giving the zoning board a chance to approve the change? So, so that's why I was asking, should we not send that back to, send them back to the zoning board, come up with their recommendation, go before the zoning board, let the zoning board decide that's, if they approve that or deny that, and then present us their strategy or their recommendations so we can vote on what the zoning board decides and not what the two parties decide? Because then, if we do it that way, we would be taking the zoning board out of the loop of that process.
I understand that, but I'll make up my own mind, and I'll vote just what the zoning board recommends. That-
Does that make sense, counsel?
Well, I, I, first of all, I don't think we know if they have an agreement or what that agreement might be. So I think, I think, I think it's appropriate if you're not ready to decide now, one, one to give the parties a chance to work it out and give them that chance. Then they come back in two weeks. You'll get an update on what, everybody still have an opportunity to discuss it. You may decide to approve the request, deny the request, or depending upon what the workout is, send it back to the zoning board with a recommendation. It came to you with no recommendation. So, so it's two to two. It's not approved, not denied. So you could do any one of those three, or table it again if there's still some opportunity for further discussion.
Is it not a wait period to go back to zoning if it's not approved? I know it's denied.
Well, if you deny it, there's a year that they can't bring it back up.
But then, if it's-
If it's denied.
Right.
If you deny, yes.
So no action is not the same as a deny?
Well, it could, well, if you do-
I was gonna ask, do you have to wait a year?
You're called upon to vote one way or the other, either to approve it or not. You could give more time for them to work it out.
I'm, I'm just specifically talking about going back to the zoning.
Right.
Can it go back? Because it was not-
We can send it back.
You could, sure. You could, you could ask them to reconsider with the, for a recommendation. I think that really depends on what, what the issues remain. And if you're not comfortable voting one way or the other, that's an option available.
Well, my only concern is that we have that, that board, the intermediary board there for a purpose to help us, to give us advice. So I don't want to be, I don't want to sit at this table and, and make a decision without the zoning board having a chance to tell us what their opinion is when they make their recommendations for us. And then we go based on their recommendations a lot of times. So if we take them out of the process, then I think we, we circumvent the whole, the whole process that we have. So just, my recommendation would be that we, we send it back to the zoning board, and send them back to the zoning board with the, with the issues and let them work it out, and then come back to us again with the, with the request from the zoning board.
Steve would be here.
No, no, no. But it doesn't hurt anything to table it as it is. They haven't made an agreement. So it could, it could not change, and it could stay the way it is. So I think it's presumptuous of us to assume that they're going to work something out. So it doesn't hurt anything to table it. It just stays on the agenda. And if it's worked out, then we can remove it next, next meeting.
And just to be clear, it has gone through the appropriate process. It just so happened there were only four commissioners, and the bill was two to two. So it has gone through the zoning commission for their review.
So any motion to table?
Yes, sir.
Motion to table.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion to table, approved.
And it would come up on the next agenda for October fifteenth, the final do, and it would be on the agenda for final adoption.
Introduction of ordinance and set public hearing. Number one, introduction of an ordinance to amend ordinance number ten dash fifty-one ninety-seven, the city statute establishing certain requirements for the discharge of wastewater in the city of Hammond. Mr. Gary.
This, this would make, this would change our, be a change our significant industrial user ordinance to bring our, the way we calculate their metals in line with the way the state requires us to submit our calculations to them. So what we're trying to do is get, the way we calculate, we, we pull samples of industrial users, and we run samples. And we want to be able to do our calculation the same way that we're required to do when we turn it to the state. And that's what this change in ordinance would allow.
How many industrial users do we have?
Around five. It's not a lot.
And the ordinance, really, the ordinance says that a, a significant industrial user actually use fifty thousand dollars of water a day. So that, that kind of narrows it down a day. Maybe sixty.
Fifty thousand.
Motion, please.
Second.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Number two, introduction of an ordinance authorizing the borrowing of funds from the sales tax fund number two oh three, ninety-five thousand, dash fifty-nine, zero one eight five, an amount not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the airport control tower project at the Hammond North Shore Regional Airport. Mayor Foster.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the council, and it's been announced to the public, the bids on the airport tower came in at about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over what the budgeted amount was to build the tower. The, there is, the city of Hammond currently owns a piece of property that was once part of the airport. There were two runways, actually three runways, and one of those runways was two, runway two four, two two four. And the part of the runway that was runway two, two stuck out of what, across what is now Industrial Park Road. There's approximately seventeen acres of property that the city currently owns that was at one time part of the airport. The, this property has received the authority of the FAA to sell with the provision that any proceeds from the sale of this property be used specifically for the airport. Can't be used for anything else. So therefore, we would like to ask the council to approve. Let me step back a little bit. The previous council, I believe it was in two thousand eleven, has authorized the sale of that property. So we already have the authorization for the sale of the property. But what we would like to do at this point in time is to borrow three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the sales tax fund, which is what Mr. Francis said that we should borrow from, until such time that we can sell the property. We do have a recent appraisal, and the appraisal was three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So it was very close to this amount of money. So that's kind of the background of this. We'll get into a lot more detail with maps and so forth at the public hearing.
Okay.
Can we, and just a couple of questions. I know we have a public hearing, but when we, when we go through that public hearing, can we also give a list of all other possible funding sources that are available? You know, because we're going to have, two weeks before we meet again, I would like to have some exhaustive activity that shows any other potential funding sources that are out there. And if we can do due diligence on that, that would be very beneficial.
Councilman, I would assure you that if there were any other funding sources, we would have used them. I would remind the council that we are already using state capital outlay money on this project. We're already using money from the FAA. The state has kicked in a little money. We have approved a, a few resolutions tonight. If you're asking me or asking the administration to go find an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm going to tell you that we have done exhaustive search. If we would have been able to come up with an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we probably would have accepted the first bid when it came in. So, you know, we'll be glad to continue to look, which we do for every project that we have. Lacy looks for grants. Her department looks for grants on a regular basis. And we'll continue to look. But I, you know, I, I don't want the council to believe that we're going to be coming back to the next meeting saying, oh, yes, we found an additional three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from some state agency or some federal agency. I can assure you that there are no federal agencies that are willing to give us any more money at this point in time.
Well, I mean, it could also be other processes that we could, we can look at, you know, to, to access the funds versus using three hundred and fifty thousand bucks of our sales tax. If we have that kind of money available, then I guess there are lots of projects, the capital projects that are out there that we can potentially look at if we were doing that. And then the other question would be, how, how comfortable are we with the, with the, the ability to sell the property? And what amount of time are you projecting that would happen, would take, for that to happen?
Um, I, may I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Um, we predict, projected it will take place by the end of the year, end of this calendar year. We have already talked to some interested parties. We do know that some people are interested in it. We will have to go through the public bid process, which means that we'll have to put it out, we'll have to advertise it and so forth. We will set a time to accept bids on the property. And my, my guess is, is that, well, my estimation is, is that we absolutely can do that by the end of this calendar year.
All right. We have a motion to introduce this item only.
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen.
Number three, introduction of an ordinance to change the name of Alabama Street to George Perkins Drive, approximately fifty feet wide and twelve hundred and eighty-two feet in length in its entirety from the east, starting at J W Davis Drive, running west to Mooney Avenue as part of the Colonial Place Edition. Councilman Martin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
And fellow councilman, the mayor, and the others, it's, it's quite an honor to make this recommendation, to introduce this ordinance to change Alabama Street to George Perkins Drive. Mr. Perkins was announced in the citizens here in the city of Hammond, as well as a former councilman, and led the hair of his wife, his old lease, and his daughter, and the audience. We feel that it's very appropriate to make this request, and I'd still, of course.
Motion to introduce, motion to introduce.
Johnny Blunt?
Aye.
Jason Hood?
Aye.
Bobby Martin?
Aye.
Lamar Marshall?
Aye.
Mike Williams?
Aye.
Motion approved. Public hearing is set for October fifteenth, two thousand thirteen.
We have a motion to adjourn. So, table.